It says it. Oh, I thought it said it was on. Okay, we'll try that again. I call the meeting to order. Good evening and welcome to the April 15th, 2024 study session of the Ashland City Council. We have two agenda items this evening. We'll be looking at the recology update and rate increase as well as the severe weather shelter 2324 season summary. Alyssa, do we have anyone for public comment? Thank you. So I will hand it over then to Sabrina to get us started with the recology update.
All right. Good evening. We have our friends from Recology tonight to present to you about their rate increase per the current franchise agreement with Recology. There is an increase based on CPI annually. Tomorrow you will see a resolution that makes that official, but tonight they're going to walk us through what they've been up to. So I will hand it on over to Eric.
And when you come up, when you come up to the microphones, please push the little silver button in the front and when you see that you have a red light, you'll know you're live. We're still getting used to our new microphone system. And if you can still get in a little bit closer, they're better than they were before, but yeah, bring them in a little bit. Great. Go ahead.
Well, I'll go ahead and get started before I pass it on to Eric. So good evening. My name's Steve Brum. I am Recology's Regional Vice President and I'm overseeing our operations covering both Oregon and Washington. And so I just wanted to take a moment to provide an update, just a little bit on local leadership and what we have in terms of our team here, here in Ashland. I know a lot of you are accustomed to Gary Blake for many years coming here and presenting to you all. So he's retired, as many of you know, and much deserved and well-earned retirement. And you know, he's, he's been in this industry close to 25 years and really did a lot in the state of Oregon in this industry. You know, I've, I've personally worked with him at a couple of different companies for well over 20 years and I really, I can attest to the, the big shoes that need to be filled, that he's left behind. But what I can say is, you know, he did leave behind a very, a very well-run operation. There's a good team here. The, the local folks that are, that are doing the work day in and day out are really the same people. No one, nothing, nothing's changed there. And so just wanted to assure everyone of that continuity and just the, the company's commitment. I mean, nothing's changed. But what I did want to comment on, we have begun recruiting for a replacement for Gary and that'll, you know, that'll take a little bit of time. We've already started some interviews and we've, you know, we're getting some interest from folks, you know, here in the area and also from out of the area. So, so we're going through that, that process right now. But I did want to introduce here with me tonight is Chris Carey. Chris Carey is our Recology General Manager for the northern parts of Oregon. And in the interim, he's going to be overseeing the Ashland operations in conjunction with me, just to make sure, you know, there's no, there's no change in the level of service we're providing to you all. And so, and he's going to be working with me on the recruiting and he's also going to be responsible for the onboarding of this new person so that whoever comes on board is, is well-trained and, and ready to go before we officially hand over the reins to someone to just basically be independent down here. So I wanted to just assure everyone of that continuity of leadership. And so, and locally, of course, you all know Eric. Eric is available for, you know, if, if there's questions for anything day-to-day, he, you can run through him. You know, Chris and I are always, you can always contact us. But, um, you know, if there's a question that Eric can't handle, then, you know, he can, he can reach out to one of us. So anyways, um, you know, I, I know I'll be available if you have questions afterwards. I do want to just hand this over to Eric and let him do his, his presentation.
Sure. Any questions for Steve before we move on?
Nope, not yet.
So we just wanted to take this opportunity to go over some of the things that we've been up to locally. You know, introduce you to Recology for those who may not know about kind of our larger family of operations. And ultimately just show some of the things we've, we've been up to here, here locally. So here in Ashland, we're, we're a small part of a much larger family. So Recology is a 100% employee-owned company, 100 years old, founded in, in San Francisco, 100% employee-owned. That makes us the largest employee-owned company in the waste and and resource recovery industry. One of the things that's unique about our business model is that we prioritize recovery over landfilling. This may not be a surprise to you and it's a big part of why we're here in this community. Most of our infrastructure is built upon recovery. So material recovery facilities, also called recycling facilities, were the largest commercial composter on the West Coast. So these are things that are central to our business and the type of value that we bring to our communities. So one of the things that, that we've done recently, that's kind of similar to some of our, our other operations, is we launched a, a new artist-in-residence program here in Ashland. So this is something that we just did this past year. We had an inaugural cohort of four students. This is an exclusive partnership with, with SOU that mimics some programs that we have in San Francisco, Portland, Astoria, and Seattle, where we have, in this case, student artists actually come to our transfer station, retrieve materials and, and make pieces of art out of them. And we didn't quite know how it was going to go with our, with our first cohort in the spring. Went really well. So this is just a little bit of the imagery from their, their summer show that was housed at, at SOU. And we took the momentum from that and we have six students in this cohort already. So I think we haven't decided on an actual date, but we're looking at sometime in the middle to late May, where the materials that they're collecting right now will be, will be on display at Southern Oregon University. In fact, one of these pieces, that one on the top left, we actually purchased from the artist and it's in our administrative office now. So I'm excited, excited about that. And then the whole point of this, you know, obviously is to get people to look at waste in a new way and to really think what they're consuming, how they're consuming, and to really look at the creativity of, of artists to turn this material into something better than what it used to be. This past year, we also launched the region's first mattress recycling program. And this was something that we did really just voluntarily. We have a statewide mattress recycling program. It's going to be coming probably next year, year after. We really want to get ahead of the ball and we knew we'd have a community that, that would support that. So this is something where we started looking for who we could partner with in the region, you know, who wants used mattresses from Southern Jackson County. And we found someone. It's Clamath Works, which is a job development program over in Clamath Falls. And we went there, we looked at their facility. So we now take mattresses that are relatively clean, if they're not completely saturated or broken. So mattresses that dropped off at the Valley View Transfer Station instead of heading straight to landfill, now go into a trailer like this, head over to Clamath Works and are through a very physical manual process, hand disassembled, separated, materials are baled. So we've been really excited about that partnership. We've worked out some initial kinks as happens with any launch of a new program. And 3,000, give or take, mattresses recycled in 2023 alone. A better way to think of that is 30 semi trucks full of mattresses that, that didn't go to a landfill, that instead were, were recovered. And as I mentioned, coming up next year, there's going to be more of a statewide consolidated program. Representatives from the, the Mattress Council actually came out, toured our facilities since they knew that we were, you know, a step ahead and, and taking a look at what we're doing. It's going to mimic a program that's very much alive down in, down in California. Another one we launched last year is our bike upcycling. Don't want to quite call it recycling. It's more, it's more upcycling. We were actually approached by RVTD, a gentleman named Mike Vergier, and he came to us with really just an idea because, you know, he's been up to Valley View and he sees bicycles as we often do. And I know Bob, you're a big cyclist and, and I am as well, and he had, you know, seen those going to landfill. But ultimately, we, we just kind of started with a, I guess we'll call it a partnership, but it was like, hey, if we pull bikes out of here, can you do anything with them? And they have a program called Pedals for Patriots and it started very simply. We make a pile. I would text him a bunch of photos and say, here's what we got. Do you want to come up and get them? That's how it started. And this past year, I think it was about 40 bikes, hundreds of components that he's been able to harvest from, from the transfer station and put to use through his, through his volunteers. And then those leftover scrap bikes are then sent to metal scrap recycling instead of the landfill. So just another, another just kind of side initiative that we've launched this past year. So those are kind of some of the new unique programs and then just falling back kind of on our, our, our strong base and focus on recovery. So for those who were around in the community a few years ago, when the recycling markets had, we'll call it a crash, when there was the National Sword policy out of China and sent really the entire post-consumer materials market into disarray. This city, among very few, you know, stood strong and, and, and supported recycling. And I know our, our previous GM, Gary Blake, worked very hard to make sure this material would end up at recycling facilities and ultimately could get materials to market. So that's something where, you know, in the face of other operations and other companies that were reducing recycling lists, we kept ours the same. And still have a curbside glass collection. That's something that is very few and far between, you know, most, most service providers have gotten to a point where it's, you know, depot drop-off only. We still have two depots you can drop off at our recycle center on Water Street or at Valley View, but we do still have our, our curbside glass collection. You've probably heard it at one point in time. And then obviously a hot topic is food waste and the exploration that we're doing really as we speak with our, our partners, Waste Connections up in, up in Medford and White City. I mentioned, you know, Recology is, is a very large, you know, composter, a commercial composter. All of our facilities are pretty far away down in Southern Ca-, or down in California. We're trying to find a regional solution, a local solution, and ultimately get to a point where we can incorporate food scraps into the existing curbside yard waste program. That's a goal for us. It's something we want to do. So we're working, again, with, with Waste Connections right now. There are some, some infrastructure improvements needed really on both ends to get a full launch going. We're looking at some pilots. That's ultimately where it would start. So something we're certainly committed to and, and we'll have more updates for you here hopefully soon. And then a little note about how we power our fleet. You know, we've got, you know, 20-plus trucks roaming the streets of, of Ashland, Talon, and Southern Jackson County on any given day. And we were really instrumental in bringing renewable diesel R99 down to Southern Oregon. To my knowledge, and please correct me if I'm wrong, and I don't believe there is much of any R99 supply coming to Southern Oregon until we approached Carson fuels up in, up in Portland to bring this nesty product down to us, which is really the, the top-of-the-line R99 product. Incredible reduction in greenhouse gases. And for those who really want to get technical on the GHG side, it's, it's a completely different, it's a biogenic carbon profile as opposed to anthropogenic. So it's not a fossil-derived carbon. It's carbon from the recent and existing carbon cycle. So I want to, I don't want to say they're good emissions. I don't want to go far as saying that. But certainly for diesel-powered assets, the most sustainable fleet fuel that is available in market today. So we've put that, it's a drop in fuel. We've converted 100% of our on-road and off-road machinery to run on R99. And again, this is a nesty product coming from Carson Oil and been working through the Climate Energy Action Commission to help with the school district, Mark Morrison. And they're in the process, I believe, as we speak, of converting some or all of the school bus fleet to R99 as well. So helped, helped with sharing some details and some of our experience as we work through with Carson, bringing that new product down. As you probably know, we have, again, another thing that's, you don't see that often anymore, a staffed recycling center. I was working it today since our, our other attendant was out. So not only is there someone there to answer questions and, which you'd be surprised, are a lot, a lot of questions. The redeemable cans and bottles that we receive get donated straight to Friends of the Animal Shelter. And I'd be willing to bet that nine out of 10 people that come down to that facility really just want to come there to give their bottles and cans to the animals and they're very explicit about that. So we're excited about that partnership that we have. You may have heard of a, a pretty landmark legislation that's coming through right now. It's the Recycling Modernization Act. It's going to be a huge expansion of statewide recycling program now that we're preparing for as we speak. That's going to include some modifications of that facility to take new products in the future, new material streams. So we're working on that. And ultimately, we also have some space in that area dedicated to the Southern Oregon Master Recyclers in Action and their Lend Me a Plate program. So we cohabitate down at the recycle center on Water Street. And then commitments here locally. So me and, and even others here who are available for, for questions, for trainings. I personally spent a lot of time on contamination management and doing back-house trainings on the commercial side down in San Francisco. So I'm very passionate about making sure people get recycling right, youth audiences as well as adult and senior audiences. Understanding the ins and outs of recycling, what belongs, what doesn't, and also the value and why we want to source, separate and treat materials the way we do. Several special material drop-off events that you know about, our leaf drop events. We have two programs coming up or events coming up for fire-dapid communities in April and May and a couple others throughout the year for special material streams. And then ultimately, community support as well through the chamber. See us on July 4th. You'll see us in the Rogue World Music Festival coming up and, and elsewhere as we, as we work to, you know, support where we, where we live, work, and play. So that's kind of the end. It's just a little, you know, comparative analysis, some of the things that, you know, again, we, we're proud to offer and want to continue to offer to just differentiate Recology a bit from our, our regional and, and national competitors. And we appreciate you letting us do business here nationally.
Thank you. Are there questions? Counselor Hyatt?
Thank you and thank you for your presentation. I'm curious, I'm going to dive right into some numbers if that's okay, about our partnership with the Dry Creek landfill. I know in past years, navigating Dry Creek has incurred significant price increases, like I think it was about 18% in '21, close to 9% in '22. And I'm curious what we're seeing this year in terms of potential increased pricing pressures that are stemming from the partnership that we have to maintain with Dry Creek being one of our, our closest local disposal centers.
Yeah, thanks for the, thanks for the question. We know their, their increase, at least in the coming year, is going to be pretty close to CPI.
Okay.
They did have the big increase that, that you referred to because they had, they had some expansion investment that they did. And I know they, they, they are regulated by Jackson County. So, so if they, if they raise their rates, you know, an extraordinary amount, Jackson County has to approve it. And then I, but obviously, as you say, for, for, for the city of Ashland, you're kind of left to deal with it, right? But, so it's a good question. But, but as we know right now, there's nothing unique or, or specific going on with, with, with that landfill that we know of, other than just the, the standard CPI. We know that they, if I'm not mistaken, the, that investment was for, you know, again, for an expansion of the, of the landfill. And I don't believe they're in need of another expansion for some time.
Okay, thank you. And I, I will say, Recology was a very good partner to us at that time when that increase came along. It was not completely passed along or anything along those lines, but I was just curious what we were seeing from a trend perspective. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve and Eric. And I see Gary in the audience. Just wanted to thank you for your many years of service and leadership. Looking at this list of all of the community and just good steward, things that Recology does in our community and in the industry really makes me proud to partner. And, you know, we've seen the price of a hamburger go from $10 to $15 at my favorite restaurants. And we haven't seen Recology price increases like that. So thank you for, you know, serving our community and, and, and being there. And as a business owner, we've always just had great service with, you know, getting our, our, our ebbs and flows dealt with in a way that keeps our neighbors happy. So all of that stuff, just lots of gratitude. I got a big question for you. Are you going to be at Earth Day this weekend?
The SOU Earth Day?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll be there.
That's great. We'll see you there. Thank you.
Counselor Kaplan.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and thanks, everyone. And also a shout out to, to Gary. Also want to recognize the, the great work on the mattress recycling. I'm, I'm personally really proud of that because a very close friend of ours was instrumental in working with you all on that, along with other community members, Louise Chalkett. So every time I hear about their mattress recycling, 30,000 mattresses, that's pretty, pretty amazing, I think, of, of Louise. My question is, and I appreciate the other programs that you, that you have, and, and also the work that you're doing to maintain efficiency of your operation and reduce costs, investment in your vehicles, all those kinds of things in order to make sure that you don't just pass increased costs along to, along to us. So I appreciate the effort that you're putting, that you're putting into that. I do have some questions on the food waste program. We had a chance to, Eric and I had a chance to talk about that a little bit the other day. That's something that's very much interested in this community, as you know, and there are some people that are working on that already. There's some volunteer programs. If you go to our growers market, you'll see that there's already collection, a point of collection there and supplying that compost to local farmers. So I'm wondering if there's, if the program that you're looking at developing with Waste Connections includes a component that would serve local farmers as well, or if that would be a possible feature that could be added to, to that if it's not something that you're currently considering.
I'm happy to take a stab at that first. Potentially, and I say potentially because any material that we're going to handle needs to go to a permitted compost facility first. So that would be, that would be, in this case, it would be Waste, it'd be Waste Connections facility in terms of where we can go from that point, in terms of returning that to local farms here in the, in the Rogue Valley. That's something we're certainly happy to participate in and see that it happens. We even talked as simple or as simple as can we just buy their bagged compost and have that either for sale or how can we get that, you know, back into the hands of farmers here? So ultimately, our program, if we can get it to the point as we're envisioning, you know, citywide, perhaps even included service with, you know, a green waste cart coming as part of your subscription, then just those volumes alone and then the fact that it's now considered a type III feedstock, including food waste, would need to be handled for us at a, at a permitted compost site.
Thanks, Eric.
And I'll just, I'll just add, as much as this is an exploratory thing for us, it's an exploratory program for, you know, for Waste Connections as well as, you know, the food waste programs are relatively new in, in this area. And really, you know, we're, we're just going to kind of take baby steps through it to kind of explore the options. I mean, you know, Recology in our region here, we, we have a land, excuse me, we have a compost site up in Almsville. So it's 220 miles away. We could take food waste there. However, that would be very cost prohibitive. So the, the difficult challenge here is there's not a lot of these facilities available at the moment to take this material, but we do see that changing.
So I just had a couple of comments and then a question for staff. So it's really great to have you all here and great to see you, Gary. We, we miss you already and are super happy to, to see the new people who've come on and that, that everything is going to continue on as it has because of your good leadership. Our climate commitment has a lot to do with our waste in general, but particularly our consumer food waste. And at the same time, we are very much wanting to support, as Counselor Kaplan said, our local food production. And we know that they have very small margins. And so everything that we are doing here that can pull these pieces together to both help the consumers and then also help our farmers is really important. I wanted to let everyone know, in case you didn't, that Recology has a standing seat on our Climate and Energy Policy Advisory Committee. Eric will be joining that. So welcome to that, Eric. Very glad to have you. And, and I think it's, it's, these kinds of partnerships are what allow us to move forward with some of the goals that relate to the things that the city doesn't touch itself. And so very much appreciate the, the good work you all are doing to help us figure out this composting question and, and do it in a way that, that works with the facilities that we have available to us. The question I have, Sabrina, is under the, in our council communication, and I remember this from the last time we had Recology come in front of us, it says that the rate adjustments are allowable under the current franchise agreement and AMC code. But it was my understanding that according to the contract, they are essentially automatic based, if they're based on CPI. Can you help the council understand what, what is our decision-making authority in this process for tomorrow night?
Sure. It is a, what I would call a courtesy vote, as in we need a resolution, but you can't say no.
That is how I understood it. But I just wanted, I know that we have a number of new counselors who weren't, who weren't here and maybe are not as familiar with this type of a contract.
So you will see it, I believe, on consent tomorrow.
Yes.
Just to follow our code. So another opportunity to fix something in our code potentially in the future.
Just wanted to make sure that we had that clarification while we have the Recology folks here, if anyone had any questions. Counselor Bloom? Yes, of course.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, thank you so much for the presentation. I just wanted to shout out the customer service element of what you do. I was really taken by the fact that you have very few complaints and, and a great response. And to kind of highlight that, you are competing with our police and fire department for my two-year-old son's affection. Every morning, he runs out to see the garbage truck. And I attribute it to your drivers who are very gracious and let him get close and see everything happening. So yeah, thank you for what you do for our community.
Well, we are, we are proud that we can safely visit your home 52 times a year. We don't want the police visiting your home 52 times a year.
Thank you, Mayor. Too late. No, I, I too just wanted to say thank you. Eric, welcome to the CPAC committee. It's so good to have you there. And so some of these things you had already reviewed from, with us on our Wednesday meetings and it's just really, really cool. So yeah, I, I too want to, want to echo what, what Counselor Bloom and, and others have said about the just outstanding customer service. I still, I hear the glass and, and I know the exact route because it goes by my street and then they do a U-turn and it comes back. And so like every other Thursday, my wife says, you put it out there? No, I'm going because I hear the glass. So I know I have about four minutes to get it out there. So, so thank you so very much. It's just so glad to have you supporting our community like this.
Wonderful. Well, thank you both for your presentation and enjoy your retirement, Gary. And we will move on now to the second topic for the evening, the severe weather shelter season summary.
You driving?
Yeah, I'll drive.
Okay.
Just give me one second. All right, here we go. I'm Kelly Burns. I'm your emergency management coordinator. It's nice to see you, Mayor, Council.
Yeah, if you can get in a little closer.
Got it. I'm Kelly Burns, your emergency management coordinator, Mayor, Council, staff. It's good to see you. This is the severe weather shelter winter season summary for our 2023-24 winter season with our newly acquired severe weather shelter. Just to hit the high points, for the winter season, we activated for 39 nights. And starting in November, our first nights we were activated, there was probably only about 12, 13 people that showed up. And gradually, as the season continued, if we had multiple days in a row, then that number would rise to our capacity, which was 28 for the occupancy that was the severe weather, weather shelter. Where was it? It was 2200 Ashland Street. And the Ashland Street building is split into two separate occupancies. One occupancy is the severe weather shelter. It's allowed to hold 28 people and two employees. And it's a temporary shelter. So it does have some different rules for the occupancy, which is why we can still use it. How did we do it? The shelter is a low barrier, no frills. It's just a safe, dry place to get out of the cold, wet weather temporarily and it was managed by ORA. dry place to get out of the cold, wet weather temporarily, and it was managed by ORA. How much did it cost? I'm still waiting for the final invoice from ORA for our March nights that we were open for the severe weather shelter. But to date, without that invoice, we've spent $25,575.43. And then what else can our severe weather shelter do? Per the resolution 2022-33, it defines the thresholds and conditions for activating the severe weather shelter, and we do it for three different things or events that could occur within our city. It can be a cooling center, and typically, it's open from noon to seven, once temperatures start falling in the evening, as long as we have good recoveries at night. And that temperature threshold is 95 degrees Fahrenheit. That's when we call for a cooling center. Note the language between center and shelter. Shelter is supposed to mean overnight. Center is supposed to mean just part of the day. So that's a cooling center. Overnight warming shelter during winter weather, when the temperature reaches 32 degrees or below. And finally, a clean air center, cleaner air center shelter. And that word has actually just switched in the last few months because as we're all struggling with what to do with wildland smoke and trying to figure out how to best take care of our populations that could be adversely affected by this, the language of a cleaner air center is, is what we're aiming towards now, rather than a clean air center. Reason that that's important there. So that's when our AQI locally is 150. And then we need to talk about what we're going to do for the future with that building and that severe weather shelter. So we're looking for guidance from council and from your constituents and the homeless master plan committee and the ad hoc committee. We're creating an RFP because we need a third-party service provider that can hire employees to staff the severe weather shelter. We currently don't have the capacity for that now. We need a site plan for the 22,000, sorry, for the 2200 Ashland Street building. It's a pretty high address. We could use a homeless services coordinator. Being your emergency management coordinator and then trying to be a volunteer coordinator this last summer, as well as like getting the volunteers and making sure people show up on time and making schedules and calling for it, that's a pretty heavy lift and truly a full-time job. And then finally, a note, not just for you guys, but also for me, is that we're working on improved smoke modeling because smoke is harder to predict 48 hours out, which is what's required by our resolution. And so while some of the models that the National Weather Service puts out can be accurate up to about 24 hours, the concentration and the density of smoke in different areas of town is different in different places. And so that's, it's harder to predict when we would need that. Thoughts and questions? And I'll do my best to answer them.
Counsel Bloom?
Thank you, Mayor. Hello. So I'm actually, I'm really curious about this whole RFP process and, and trying to understand why we actually need to do this. I mean, from my perspective, it seems that it would make more sense, especially if we're going to go with a homeless services coordinator, that we just add on the liability insurance and we have that person navigate contracting out, whether it's somebody staying there overnight or dealing with, you know, volunteer coordinating. So are there any restrictions on us for, you know, not being able to go that route, that we have to do an RFP?
I think maybe, maybe I'm going to answer for Sabrina on this one, because we don't currently have somebody doing that. We're going to need a third party at this point until we can get a homeless services coordinator. So part of doing the RFP process in this nice time we have now where we don't have smoke and we don't have super hot days is just to get it out there and see if someone does have that service. I wouldn't, you know, I wouldn't want to start the effort to get the homeless services coordinator and find out we can't do it, and then we still don't have anybody to staff it, right?
So I think another thing to consider, in the past, we have relied on kind of volunteer buildings as well as volunteer staff, and that has resulted in some not optimal results of the severe weather shelter. So I think when we're thinking about the future of what the city is going to do around homeless services, we need to think about our role in connecting people who are using those services with further services to move them towards housing, as that's the ultimate goal. And so having people trained in that area is probably most beneficial long-term for that. We also need to consider adding, and part of that RFP is supervision of the campground. So Dust to Dawn campground is not supervised right now. It has been popular with quite a few people staying there with varying, you know, effects depending on the population. So we're at a point where I believe if we combine both of those into an RFP, we have kind of an economy of scale potentially for a nonprofit, where they're onsite all the time for the Dust to Dawn shelter and able to staff at the severe weather shelter. The difficulty with severe weather is the notice of, you know, it's random, you know, within 48 hours for, for weather, but, you know, within five hours for smoke. It's, it's very difficult calling that, and oftentimes, we end up calling it, and it does not get to the thresholds, or we don't call it, and it does get to the thresholds. So it's kind of a moving target. But it's very difficult to coordinate volunteers. And oftentimes, while the volunteers do a great job, I think having, you know, when we were partnered with ORA, we had people trained in navigation services who could, who could kind of take them to the next step potentially. So that's our thinking in RFPing. Now, even having a contract, we need someone to manage that contract because that takes a lot of time. And so we have a lot of homeless service coordinator duties going on, spread throughout the city, and that individuals are picking up. So having that concentrated with one individual within the city is probably a good idea, because I don't think that's going to diminish over time by any means. And, you know, depending on the outcome of our ad hoc process that's getting started, and then the subcommittee, you know, there may be additional things that need to be added on to this.
Can I follow up? So I understand that. And I, I just, for me, I think that we go through an RFP process, it would be pretty similar timeline of bringing on a homeless services coordinator who would be an expert and would be able to fill those gaps. Personally, I'm not really satisfied with the previous contractor and how that was done, especially going over some of the finances and how much money was spent on, on, you know, labor, just as an example. I would also argue that doing it in-house provides a level of accountability to our citizenry. If they have issues, they know who to go to, whereas we're now stuck in the middle, if we have a separate contractor. And on top of that, same for the city. If we have issues, we have things that we want to do. Rather than being stuck in a particular contract, we have a lot more flexibility in how we go about those operations. So I would advocate for holding off on our RFP and doing this in-house.
So I think if we're thinking in-house, then you're looking at more than one employee potentially, because, you know, it takes a lot of work just managing a contract. If we were to move to having, you know, for example, we have to stand up the severe weather shelter for two weeks straight, 24/7, you know, that can't be one person.
Can I answer that? Yeah, no, absolutely. And I think that that's something that we should consider. I mean, we've got the, the homelessness master plan coming out. We're not quite sure what recommendations might come out of that, but there certainly seems to be a broader conversation about expanding our role as a city and, and what it is that we do. And so it would make sense to build out a program like that, rather than potentially spending quite a lot of money to do an RFP, to get an outside organization, to ultimately maybe just come back and do it in-house anyways. So it just seems that from, from a planning perspective, it would be better just to take this approach. But that's just my opinion.
Counsel Kappel?
Great. Thank you very much, Kelly and Sabrina. And thanks, Counsel Bloom, for raising this. It's a, it's an interesting thought that you, that you raise. As I'm hearing this, I'm very supportive of a coordinator, homeless services coordinator on staff in the city. I think, I think we, what we can foresee at this point is that we're, we have the, a need for these services. We need, have a need for coordinating that, for being the point person. And I have been concerned that it's a distraction from the city manager, from our emergency operations coordinator and others in the staff so far. On the question of an RFP, so I would love to see that proceed very, very quickly. The way I think about a service provider for, you said for managing the shelter, managing the Dust to Dawn lawn, those are more specialized services. I appreciate the, the question, line of questioning from Counsel Bloom. I'd be concerned about bringing staff people on to do that. That seems to me to be something that, you know, a city like ours wouldn't want to really add full-time equivalents to, to do those, that kind of work. I don't know how much that would be. I'd have some concerns in terms of budget for that, particularly as it's something that is, goes up and down, and we'd want to have a little bit more flexibility. But I think those are all questions that could be explored in looking at the two, the two options on the table. You mentioned, Sabrina, the possibility of getting a single provider to do both Dust to Dawn and, and the building. And I think that's, that would be excellent if that would be possible. I wonder, though, are you going to require that bidders take on both aspects, or would bidders perhaps be able to pick and choose and it could end up being, you know, two different providers, depending on whether we can find somebody? I just wonder whether one provider is going to do both, or whether that's going to limit our, limit the offering.
That's a good question. I think, you know, we can leave it open. You can respond to one, other, both. I think very, you know, both of these things are, are interesting because one is overnight, one is, is random. And so, you know, having someone come in and do that is a little different than we see other cities potentially doing when they partner with nonprofits. So we're not really sure what response we will get. But until we ask the question, we don't really know how to, you know, move forward with finding a partner. What we do know is we don't have the staff, and to hire enough staff to be able to cover that would most likely be exponentially higher than partnering with someone. So, you know, we can do more detailed fiscal analysis, because I think that's a, a great question. But, you know, traditionally, not that we have to do it this way, cities tend to partner with nonprofits for these types of services instead of provide them in-house.
Right. Thank you very much. That's, I'm sad for them.
Counsel Hanson?
Thank you, Mayor. And, well, thank you both for all of your work into 2200 and the services around it and, and the service door community. It's all new to me. A year and a half ago, I, I was so unconnected with what a city really needed to help their homeless community with. And I think we're all learning on some level, but for me, it's like drinking from a fire hose. Learning about the services available in this community is, has been humbling, really. I mean, there's a lot of incredible people doing a lot of hard work, and I appreciate all that. And it does seem like we can do better, and our funding for it is a big question mark for me. I hear that, that the night lawn has so many issues and problems, and I appreciate the resource, but I also am so concerned about the residents camping, surviving on the night lawn. And I wonder, when we think about contracting or in-house, I just go back to funding. And whatever we choose to do with the sites and the, and the RFP or in-house, really where resources could, could move the needle on this, they seem to be coming from the state, but we don't have any operational monies. And I wonder if there's something available that we haven't identified yet, or something from the county. I also would love to see more navigation services at 2200 and getting more people into, into temporary housing, permanent housing. So my, my two questions really are, what I don't see in the packet is what's cooking behind this meeting bubbling up in other meetings for funding sources? And, and then also kind of a realistic timeline, if there's any opportunities that have been identified to help fund an in-house or a more stable contractor relationship?
So council appropriated $100,000 each fiscal year for this biennium for homeless services. So that is general fund monies that we have set aside, and those are, those funds are being used for the facilities on the Dust to Dawn lawn. So we have the dumpster and the porta potties. The upgrades we've made to the area have been done through that funding. And some of that funding has been used in addition to some of the work that's gone to 2200. So anything that hasn't been funded through the state for the purchase of the building has come from those general fund monies or additional grant monies that we've gotten for homeless services. So typically, you're correct, funding comes from the state. So right now, Linda and Brandon and I are working on some suggestions for how we could use operating dollars within the community to have shelter beds stood up, potentially with partners and hotels or something of the like, to get those operating dollars here. Until we work through our process for the 2200 building, I don't know what other funding opportunities may be available, because we're not quite sure what that site will be used for, though we do keep an eye out for anything that may help, you know, the Dust to Dawn situation. So, you know, we do look for funding opportunities, but we have also acknowledged, you know, as an organization and council has, that using general fund dollars in this way is appropriate, and that's why they've been appropriated for that. So when we look to contract with someone through an RFP, that is the, the money we would be looking to expend for those services.
Okay. And I didn't hear you talk about the county, and I'm curious if we have any, any relationships with the county that, are any other communities receiving county funds for these services?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. And one more, if I will, the site plan conversation. I, you know, we're looking to the homeless master plan for, for a lot of information, and I don't think this is the forum that we're going to start talking about site plan stuff today. I'm curious, though, when we have that information, if that's something that is, is kind of penciled out in the, in the future. And if so, when are we going to have that discussion, you think?
I would assume in the next few months.
Yeah, okay.
So I think, you know, it's all going to kind of coalesce with the ad hoc and the master plan. So once we have that information, then I think it's back to a study session for you all to discuss that information and how you would be looking to move forward and what we're gonna, you know, what services we're going to provide out of 2200 moving forward.
And maybe some funding opportunities will come out of that, once we can laser in on, on what that plan looks like.
Yeah, I think once we identify our goals with the site, it'll be easier to kind of target funding opportunities. So if, you know, community meals is on the table, then we can specifically look for dollars around that. Right now, it's just kind of a big question mark. So it makes it difficult to, to specifically target funding without having direction.
Well, this has been a big lift, and thank you both and all the others, people in this room, others that aren't in this room, for all the work into this. It's kind of been something Ashland's needed for a long, long time, and we're, we're finally, I think we're going to get it right, but we're not there yet. Thank you.
Yeah. And just to follow up on that, the, the timing is designed to have the homeless services master plan come back to us, I think in June is what the, the target date is. The council will address that master plan draft and decide whether or not to accept it or tweak it, or whatever that process would look like. The ad hoc committee to develop the site plan for the facility and the property is designed in terms of timing to get started and then to be able to integrate the information that comes from the homeless services master plan. So we would expect to see that facility plan come later in the summer, early fall potentially. But at that point, we would know what, what are those elements. Again, the council will decide if, if what comes from that ad hoc committee is what the council wants to do. And then that's really when the potential, I think, for other funding sources would come about. So that's, that's what I'm anticipating in terms of that timing. Counsel Hyatt?
Thank you, Mayor. With regard to the RFP, putting out a contract for bid, how do we feel about the pool of potential folks who would respond? Do we feel like we are in an environment where we have one provider, or are we in an environment where we may have multiple come forward?
The, the hope is, is that you'll have multiple come forward, because right now, ORA had the shelter for us for a while, and, and it would be nice to see if there are other providers out there. But we won't really know until we do it.
Fair enough. And is that a case where you can, do you have to rely on folks responding? And is that a case where you can, do you have to rely on folks responding, or can you work the Rolodex?
So, we will reach out to service providers and let them know this opportunity exists. I think Aura has been an outstanding partner, and often due to timing, we've relied on them as a service provider that's very local. But, you know, I think we can all acknowledge that this is a county-wide issue, and there are county, you know, more potential providers within the county that may be interested. And that was our thought, too, with having both services go at the same time, is that, you know, it may provide enough of an economy of scale of interest for someone to apply than just for a severe weather shelter, or just for the campground. But to Bob's point, we probably should leave it open, so that we can be flexible in who's responding.
Can I ask one more? Well, actually, it's more of a comment, Mayor.
Yes.
With regard to the homeless service coordinator, this is something that I have watched build over some time. And at first, it's a case where you see a little bit of one resource that needs to be applied, and then you have your emergency coordinator who's looking at this, and not necessarily doing the prep work for fire season and evacuation. You have your housing coordinator who's equally at capacity. And I learned a lot recently, too, from our officers on patrol for APD, and some of the tasks that come onto their plate as well. So, I do think that in providing this service, both those who receive the service and the individuals who need to provide, we need to find a better balance, because as moving it little bits and pieces to each of the amazing resources we have in-house, I think it makes it harder for them to do their core work well. And I think it makes it hard to provide the best possible service to the end user as well. And it is for those reasons that I really do think that coordination position would provide significant value to how we execute this, because we don't want to just do it because it needs doing. We want to do it right, and we want to do it well. And I know that our people currently are trying to do just that, but as Appleby said, it can be a heavy lift when you're trying to do it with everything else. So, I just wanted to note my support of that. I do recognize there are funding questions there. So, if we need to look at it, kind of like of an elegant comparison, but like a lease or buy, contract or hire kind of analysis, I'm open to looking at that. But I definitely think that we have a need there, and I would support it.
Thank you. Yes, I have a debt of gratitude for not only Kelly, but Linda Reed, as well as our police department, who have done quite a lot around the homelessness issue. But, well put. I think, you know, we're at a point where we need someone who can really focus, and has the background and the education in this particular topic, to move us forward, and have some real, excuse me, knowledge in how to, you know, move us in the correct direction. And that is not to say that Kelly, Linda, and PD haven't done an outstanding job. They have, but I would like them to do their jobs, and I would like to do my job. And so, that is why we're proposing this position, and I don't see us backing away from homeless issues anytime soon. We've definitely committed through our resolution for the severe weather shelter, and our Dust to Dawn, and our camping ordinance. And so, we need to acknowledge that that is where we're at, and we need to provide the adequate resources, and part of that is the subject matter expert who can help us navigate this. So, what I'm looking for in terms of this position tonight is direction that you're interested in bringing on this position. And so, I will work with HR to come up with a formal job duty, that's not just the bullet points that staff has helped me put together, as well as identify funding, and what would be an appropriate salary range, and all of the HR stuff we would need to do to bring this position online, and then bring that back to you all for approval.
Counselor Bloom.
Thank you, Mayor. Comment and then a question. I just want to, one last point that I'd like to make in terms of advocating to bring it in-house, is it's also a value question. I understand, you know, the budget question is there, and we need to look at that, and I'd be curious to see what the financials look like around that. But in terms of values, it's about providing, you know, the best possible service that, you know, we as Ashlanders come to expect. You know, I go through the financials, and not once did I see any contracting for cleaning services, and that was included in the original agreement, and was included as part of the budget. But yet, there's $600 for bed bug spray. Why is it, and I've witnessed this myself, volunteers and the guests at the shelter being asked to do the cleaning, when we've come to expect that maybe that's something that a provider should be doing? And so, again, another point that I'd like to make for us to bring it in-house. The next wish I have is, it was, you know, addressed in the council communication about the laundry trailer, and the shower trailer. I'm curious why it is that we don't relocate that back to Aura. We made a commitment to the neighborhood back in December, that when the shelter closed, that that would move back. We're talking about moving something essentially a block away, and would also be on location where there is a lot of navigation services going on. It seems that until we get a site plan done, and the homelessness master plan, that we honor the commitment to the neighborhood, move it back to Aura, who I believe it is their trailer, and where there's navigation services. So, I'd like to explore that topic a little bit more.
So, are there thoughts about the laundry trailer? It seems like that's what Counselor Bloom is asking for specific feedback on. Counselor Hyatt?
I definitely recognize the point. I think one of the things that I would want to make sure we research before a final decision is made, is I do believe laundry and shower services were part of our contract with that building. And I want to make sure, by contract, I mean with regards to the overall procurement of the building, and I want to make sure that we don't sever that prematurely.
Other thoughts?
I would be inclined to say the same thing. I don't believe, from what I've read, that it does, but that would be for our staff to look into. I think for the ad hoc committee process, I think it's just cleaner and easier if we kind of have a blank slate to be working with, and imagining what could go there, recognizing that while we're doing that planning, we're still, we're still doing the, any sort of severe weather shelter that needs to happen there would still happen there. But it does, I think, make it a little bit easier to figure out what a place should be, if it doesn't have a whole bunch of uses already at the same place. So, are there any concerns about directing staff to look into having the trailers moved? Trailer moved? Nope? Okay. I have a couple of questions, some thoughts. One of the things I know that we've talked about with the Dust to Dawn shelter is that is the expense of having it fully monitored? That if we had supervision there, that we would essentially be hiring someone eight hours a day, it's multiple people? So, when we think about staffing the dawn-to-dusk shelter, what do you envision that means?
That it's staffed from dusk to dawn, when we have individuals at the site.
So, we're looking at a significant cost if we go through a process with a contractor?
So, not 24/7, but for, you know, 12 hours a day, yes.
Yes, 12 hours a day, seven days a week. That's a couple of people a year, I mean, a couple of full-time jobs. One of the things that I have, we've had some initial conversations about, and I've talked to some advocates about, is the idea of having a camp host, and whether we could find someone who is, who lives on the lawn, who would like, who prefers not to be indoors. We have folks who are in that circumstance, and might be able to be a person from within that community, and might have a stronger ability to manage the different personalities that come on-site, rather than someone who's in a more of a, more of a, what is the word I'm looking for? Whoops. Yeah, authoritative, or enforcement kind of space. And so, I have, I am, earlier on with it, when I was just coming onto the council, we couldn't find enough money to do any kind of thing on sheltering. Just getting the $100,000 into the budget to deal with the emergency weather shelter was a very difficult run. And so, when I think about now, suddenly, we are thinking about contracting for a full-time facility on the night lawn, and we have our emergency weather shelter, and then we have a coordinator coming on, and we have $100,000 that we have set aside. I am not sure if we matched that full listing up against all of the other things that we have in the general fund, that it would come out to that level of an investment. And I don't want to piecemeal our way into a program that we can't sustain over time. And so, I recognize that the council's job isn't to tell you it should be a contractor or an employer, that sort of thing, but what I would hope we could do is come up with a job description that allows us to manage both of those sites in the most humane and friendly way, that has the best ability to move people towards services, which sometimes is not formal people who work for an organization. And to do it in a way that deals with the flexibility needed for the severe weather shelter, but also allows us to free up our staff time. We recognize that, and we're having this conversation on the advisory committee I serve on in FEMA, where emergency managers, especially across the West, are being pulled into homeless services, when what they need to be doing is dealing with fire, flood, earthquake, that sort of thing. And so, getting that aligned is something that I'm very supportive of. Getting another position on at the city, I'm very supportive of. But I don't want these expenses to balloon, and then we get to the next budget cycle, and we've created something that we can't feed.
So, there will be some insurance considerations with who manages that site, that will dictate what we can and can't do in terms of who's employed to oversee that site.
Counselor Dale.
Thank you, Mayor. Going back to the RFP and the timing, and I understand that this is, you know, the timing is of the essence here relative to that and the season that we're in, but how do you, what are the thoughts behind the structure of the RFP as it relates to the actual request, when there are still open-ended questions coming from the ad hoc committee, the homeless services plan? How do you put the RFP out when we still have these questions, or is it, are you integrating that into the RFP?
So, the severe weather shelter is fairly well set. So, it is the Dust to Dawn lawn that presents an interesting challenge, and that perhaps the location may change over time, but the service more than likely will remain the same. So, we are pretty upfront in what we're asking for in the scope of work, and we'll see the response that we get. I think there's always language that we have in there that allows some flexibility on our side.
Counselor Hanson.
I have a question to this body. Does anybody recall the tours that we took up in Eugene? Do you remember what umbrella the camp hosts and coordinator positions fell under?
So, the city of Eugene did, they first used somebody from their Parks Department, and then they can, the person that we met and toured, I think Dylan was there, too. And then, he became the full-time homelessness services policy coordinator, and I think he said to me that he has two or three staff. It's a bigger city, of course.
$100,000.
What's that?
I believe Eugene's $200,000.
Oh, yeah. So, he has a few staff that work for him, and then the facilities that we saw were under the umbrella of, I think it was St. Vincent de Paul in Eugene. At least the one that we saw, I think there are some other services as well. So, they were working definitely with organization, partner organizations, rather than managing that in-house, but they had, I think, roughly the same structure that Sabrina and Kelly were talking about, is having a staff person in this case manage, you know, a service provider that does that, that has that special capability, and can connect it in. So...
And then, I believe, thank you for all that, Counselor, and I believe that the camps had hosts that we visited, and I don't know what kind of insurance, regulation, you know, structure they were operating under, but it seems as though it was creative.
Mm-hmm. I assume the hosts reported to their organization that managed it. Actually, St. Vincent de Paul managed the one that was inside, then the ones that were the outdoor, in the field, that was subject to flooding.
Right, right. I was, can I?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was kind of thinking that, too, that what it seemed like was that the outside one that we saw, which I guess would be the closest comparison to the Dust to Dawn site, my understanding is that essentially a city staffer would kind of go in and check in, you know, once a day, make sure things were okay operationally, but it was somebody from the camp, when it originally started, kind of graduated up into kind of a management position. That's how I remember the conversation, but I could be wrong.
I'm quite sure that it was another organization that stood in between that. I think you're right, that there was some, there was a structure within that, that developed over time, to provide some own self-governing capability, but there's an organization that stands over that, it's not the city.
So, I will say who the city employs versus who a nonprofit partner would employ is a completely different thing. So, if we were to partner with a nonprofit to do this, and they hire camp hosts that are from the community, that's well within their right to do that, but we have constraints as a city in our hiring practices.
Right, and just to follow up on that, I think that I completely understand the desire, and I share it, to not have the city be running these specialized services. I think, you know, that isn't what we do typically. It's not like police and fire and the typical things. I think what I'm looking at is, is there a way to design this, and to put out an RFP that draws the kind of creative solutions that don't end up quadrupling this investment that we have? It may be that the state will show up with additional homeless services funding, but I don't imagine that that kind of services they would want to fund would be the kind of services that we offer on the sleeping lawn, on the Dust to Dawn site. And so, I don't anticipate that we are likely to ever see funding coming in to support that site. So, I would like the RFP to say, you know, tell us how you would manage this. How would you, you know, do it at the lowest cost, but also, you know, meeting the requirements and the goals of the site? So that they probably know other creative solutions that other towns have done, and they may come in with something that they can point to and say, this is what so-and-so is doing in another community, as opposed to saying, what we're looking for is you to have staff that come every night and stay on the lawn. And so, that's what I would hope for. And then, if we think about the emergency weather shelter, I think one of the possibilities we might consider is a combination of employee and contractor. So, where an employee is making that, you know, when the call is made to open it, the employee sets out to pull the pieces together for it, but maybe, I don't know if this is something that could be possible, if there could be a standing group of people who are confirmed contractors, who have, you know, who have already been cleared, and when the call goes out, you know, however many we need, two people that we need, whoever puts up their hand and says, I can come and be tonight, I can come tonight, that they, you know, you amend their contract, the contract is set up that way, so it's not a big bureaucratic difficulty. But you've essentially got a team of people to call from, and we're not relying on volunteers, but we're also not having to go through a lot of bureaucracy every time we stand it up, in order to try to find who could come and help us with it. But I think I'm really interested in figuring out, how do we create that capacity to manage this very unexpected, you know, it's typically going to be relatively unexpected when these things come on. You'll be able to predict a little bit in advance, but not a huge amount, without expending so much of our resources that we then are not able to move forward with our homeless services master planning, and the site planning, and all of that. I'm hoping that there's some way that we can... I'm hoping that there's some way that we can pull that together where the center of that is our staff person and we are contracting out in a really efficient and smart way that works for the people we're serving in both of these facilities. So I don't know the perfect way to do that, but I think that's what I am aiming for when I'm looking at what is going to come back from staff. Counselor Bloom.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. That's, that's kind of exactly how I was envisioning it, so thank you for wording it that way, is look, you know, at the end of the day, government has not, you know, typically done these sorts of things and certainly has kind of failed to address the houselessness issue broadly speaking across the country. And that means that we need to maybe think outside the box and not the traditional norms of how a government would go about solving some of these issues. So I would certainly like to see us explore that. I have two questions, they're very quick and easy, and then I'll shut up for the rest of the night. Real quick, what would it take to host a shelter in the office part of the building instead of just the West End and what restrictions are around that? And then the other thing is, there were some materials that are funding purchased such as the mats and totes, as I understand it, and the financials. I want to make sure that those remain with the building and with us.
Yeah, so the mats and all that are still there and they'll remain there. Ora did a nice cleanup of it and I was working with Lisa Smith to like make sure that everything was done right. They even hired a cleaning service after they were completely out to go through it. I think it was Stratford Cleaning Service, so they did use those budget bunnies. And then the other piece of using the other part of the building, I think the fire marshal would probably be best to answer exactly like what the occupancy level would need to be for an overnight on that and like what numbers could be in there.
So I had a couple of follow-up questions. One behind that, I saw that the total occupancy for the severe weather side was 28. Is that correct?
That's correct.
How many times did we go over that in terms of the need and what happens when the 29th person shows up at the shelter?
I don't know.
Avram? Yeah, if you could come up, Avram, that'd be great.
We just didn't go over, we talked about it.
Yeah, if you could scoot in a little bit so we can hear you better.
We talked about it, but I think maybe one person got turned away one night as far as I know, but as far as I know, we just basically lucked out at 28.
So that would seem like a question to figure out is what is available on the second side of that for overflow capacity? I would definitely be interested in, in thinking that through and I think the ad hoc committee is going to need that information as well to understand what has to be maintained at that site. And if you can push that button again, Avram, may it win out.
Yeah, so I spoke to this another, another time that when, you know, this was a very mild winter. Last winter, we were open 60 nights and I spoke how when we were at The Grange during COVID, we had the Christmas storms and we ended up with 45 people because of people coming down out of the hills who couldn't get into their camps anymore or into their homes. Yeah, 28 is, and then if there's not an everyday shelter, now that's another 30 people back on the streets. So we had 28 with the everyday shelter and with 60 people at the OR Center. So, yeah, but clearly, hopefully, there's going to be an allowance. The other thing, at the other side, with separate rooms and things, we can isolate a family with children that comes in or you have vulnerable women that are really concerned and afraid to come to the shelter. I know women that don't come because it's too scary for them. So where you have rooms, you can create, like we did when we were at East Main Street by, by the Safeway, we had a room for women or if we had a family, we put a family in there. So we have to be able to create safety for vulnerable women and for families. And, yeah, I mean, hopefully, the fire marshal is going to allow us to use the other part of the building. That would be really difficult that we have to be. And the other thing is using a porta body in the middle of stormy weather when it's, you know, 20 degrees outside and snowing, it's not a good situation that people have to go out there to go to the bathroom in a porta body.
So I think that, that, those are some of the questions that the facilities ad hoc committee will, will be asking of our staff to find out what the possibilities are. And certainly since we know that that is, that is the primary purpose of that building going forward, I think making sure that we have the appropriate capacity and figuring out how we do that is going to be an important part of this. Also recognizing that, that that building is not always a shelter and so what are the compatible uses that can be brought to bear in that space? My other que, thank you so much, Avram. Go ahead.
Just to speak to the issue of having a homeless coordinator hire people, I mean, I think a homeless coordinator is fantastic, but just to remember that Ora has a program set up for hiring employees. They have an online training program that includes trauma-informed care, that includes what to do in emergency situations. You know, they have a whole training program set up online that you have to go through. It's quite extensive. So just to realize that that's a lot to put on a homeless coordinator to take on that whole job of how to hire and train people. I'm not saying not to do it, I'm just saying that that really needs to be considered. That's part of what you got when you got Ora. You got, you know, a whole training program and a whole coordination of employees already set up. Plus, Ora had people at the motel that they could just shift over if somebody got sick or, you know, somebody couldn't get to work because of the snow. You're doing a shelter in snowy conditions, people can't always get there. So Ora had a backup already there because they have extra people scheduled at the motel. And so if somebody couldn't make it to the extreme weather, they just shifted people over. So they're just, just to appreciate that there's a lot involved in staffing an extreme weather shelter where it is on short notice.
That's, that's very helpful and I would think if, well, my hope is that, that the city puts out an RFP, that we get a strong response from our various partners and that we can find the best approach that really threads the needle and is the most effective and has each partner doing the piece that is, is most suited to them. And I could certainly imagine whatever that approach is, if, given that there's a training place, there's a training program, that that might be able to be leveraged even if Ora's not interested in, in the larger contract. And so I think my hope is that all of the capacity that has come online over these last couple of years can be kind of brought to bear and something interesting, cost-effective, really effective for the people who rely on these services can, can be gotten to. But I appreciate you, you coming in and sharing your thoughts and sharing those perspectives. Very helpful.
In doing research on, for being on the subcommittee, I saw that Portland hired a company from LA. So I don't know if you're willing to go, how far afield you're willing to go, but this company that was already running an urban campground in LA is going to Portland to do the same thing for Portland. So, you know, our local nonprofits are pretty limited and I don't know how many companies are willing to travel to Ashland, but just something to think about.
Great, thank you. Kelly, I had a quick question about the, the, one question about the temperatures in the summer. So I know that 95 is the, is the trigger temperature during the day, but the, the health impacts from extreme heat really come in and you'd mentioned this about what is that nighttime temperature dropping down to? It's really can you cool your core down over the course of that day? So when we're looking at that and we're thinking about keeping it open during the day, is there a point at which we might consider keeping it open for the, as a sleeping shelter, particularly if the, if the temperatures are not dropping down low enough? And if memory serves, it's, it's something around that. It's got to get down around below 73 or 75 at night in order for people to cool off enough to be able to make it well through the next day. Are we looking at the bottom end of those temperature thresholds at all when we think about what the duration of the extreme heat shelter needs to be?
I don't know the exact number for, you know, a better recovery on that too, but we have to be looking at those numbers because if we're doing something like Portland had the heat dome, was that last year?
Yeah.
And the recoveries there weren't happening. And so we have to be open to knowing that our cooling center might be a cooling shelter overnight. Same thing with smoke. The smoke doesn't always leave after the end of the day. It usually sticks around, so it will likely be an overnight at times too. So, yeah, we're trying to solve all the problems on that. There's three, three big ones right now. Let's hope the earth doesn't create more.
Right. And I appreciate the differentiation between the shelter and the center. That really helps me with thinking about what are these different elements and how are we trying to address them? My last question is, when we talk about the cleaner air shelter on that side as a, as a severe weather shelter element, are we, are we set up in terms of our HVAC and filtering system already in that section? Because I know it's, it's not, it doesn't feel the same as the other side of the building does in terms of finished. Are we needing to make any major investments for the clean air side?
Probably not a major investment, but our local wildfire division has Sarah Jones and she's been helping install purple air monitors which give a better, more accurate reading and she can evaluate those spaces. So we have a good HVAC system at the severe weather shelter, whether it's the, the one that they put in, you know, as good as the one that they put in at the Presbyterian Church, which is like certified and I don't know all the language for that, so forgive me for not knowing, but we need to evaluate it. And additionally, in the interim, until we can prove that the site is completely clean when there's, you know, over 150 AQI out there, we have access to additional air scrubbers that can be installed inside the building to help just filter out that smoke, so.
And that's, and that's what was the next piece is I know that we can also do temporary machines that you can bring in. And so we are going down the road though to assess the air quality of the inside of that space so that if we are opening it up and encouraging people to come into a safer place that we actually know.
That it actually is, yeah.
We know what that air quality looks like. Great, thank you. I figured we were, but I thought I would just ask. Any final questions of staff? Counselor Kaplan.
I just want to make sure you were asking for direction on the coordinator position.
Yeah, so if I could just maybe go over.
So I think certainly a couple of us said yes, go, but I'm not sure that if that's enough direction or you needed it to be a majority.
I heard yes, go. Stop me if I'm wrong. So I will work with HR to develop an actual job description, not just bullet points, appropriate salary range. So we'll do the study that needs to go into that. And I will work with finance to identify financing. I do have a kind of a final comment. You know, I understand the concerns about budget and the expense and up to this point, the city has been absorbing the expense of all of this through PD, Linda's position, Kelly, myself. We are at a point where we cannot absorb it anymore. So there is going to be more expense with homeless services moving forward and we will have that discussion as we know more what that expense is going to be when we get responses from the RFP. But we need to be prepared to have that discussion because I don't believe we're going backwards on the service we're providing and we cannot continue to absorb it at the detriment of other responsibilities that the city needs to get done. So just to be clear about next steps, we will be evaluating the cost of those RFPs coming in and depending on the level, we may be back to have a discussion with you about it or we may move forward with contracting with the appropriate contractors depending on the level of interest and the innovation and solutions that we, we see.
So it's, it sounds like then we would be, if moving forward with the RFP, we would, with any contract that comes out of it, we would set it up so that if the position then ends up taking up some of these elements that it's flexible enough to, to adjust over time? Is that correct? Since they won't be lined up at the same time?
So the contract, the person we bring on for the homeless services coordinator will manage that contract, but they will not be performing the duties that are found in that contract.
So I would like to see a full breadth conversation of this program. I, I am, I don't want to see a position over here and then later or earlier, a contract over here. I think it's important that we see, see, this is a new program that we're developing. I would like to see the pieces of it together so that, so that we know what we are, what path we're going down in terms of the next budget cycle. What would it take to have both of those conversations at the same time?
So I think what we run is the risk of fire season and heat is upon us and we need to get this RFP out the door so we have a partner for this season. So this contract will be for this fiscal year, well, starting in June hopefully, but for the next fiscal year. And then I think as we bring the homeless services coordinator on, which will take more time most likely than the RFP, we can discuss how we want that to move forward or what our next round of contracting would look like for these services, but I can't recommend delaying either one. They need to both move forward so that we can be effective moving into this next round of activity that we're going to be doing. Because right now, we're at a point where we do not have a partner to stand up the severe weather shelter.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting that we delay it, but I think we should be able to look at the contract for the, the service provider and also the job description for the, we won't have the person on, but we should be able to have both of those conversations. And I recognize that this is typically something that, that staff would simply handle within the boundaries of staff, but this is, these are new budget asks and it's a new program. And once you start something, there's an expectation that you're going to continue it. And so I think it behooves us to have a deeper dive conversation where we've got both of those elements in front of us. The, the contract on one side and the, and the staffing position and what they would do on the other. I, I don't, unless I'm misunderstanding this, I'm not seeing why we couldn't have that conversation at the same time after you get the response back from the RFP, that you could come forward and say, this is how we're looking at this full body of homeless services. You know, this is, this is why we have this in the person's job description and this is why we have, this is what we think is the best side, best piece to work with on the contracting, taken together, this is what it looks like, this is what it costs. I would like to have that conversation. I don't know if the rest of the council is interested in, in that larger holistic conversation in this time period. Does that look right? And Sabrina, is there a reason why that couldn't happen?
Well, we're set to send out the RFP in like two days.
Right, I want you to send out the RFP. I'm not, maybe, maybe I'm not making myself clear. I think we should send out the RFP and ask people for creative solutions to these issues. And then you'll get those responses back. You'll be developing the, the job description at the same time so that you'll have both of those pieces of information that you could put together and bring back as a whole. And that we would like to see that before we, even, even though there is funding in the budget for the contract for the severe weather shelter, this other element is going to require a budget shift, at least in terms of, of content of what this position is. So that's what I'm asking for. Does that sound right, Counselor Hanson?
Thank you, Mayor. I think also to temper any kind of concern that the community might be hearing right now, we're not moving forward on anything with 2,200. We're not going down any side roads. We're still working with our, our subcommittee on the master plan and our community neighborhood. We're not, we're not deviating from anything here. We're just simply taking the load off of staff and appropriately trying to, to put it on an employee or contractor to help facilitate what we're already doing. And then we're still going to come back together as a community, as a, as a committee and an ad hoc and neighbors and, and make decisions together. And I just want to reiterate that unless I'm hearing something wrong, correct me if I'm wrong, we're not, we're not going down any tangents here. We're just, we're just shoring up our staff position because our staff is burdened heavily by this and, and we want to do this right.
That's my understanding. And, and I think from everything I have heard this evening, I think it's clear from this council, and correct me if this is not correct, that we want to see our staff members able to focus on their primary work. I've, I've seen support across the board for getting a position on that brings together those elements that right now are scattered across a bunch of different positions in the city that have been taken on because of the emergency of this issue. And that we want to see that position formed. My, my element of it is, can we see the whole thing and how it all works together before, before making any decisions about shifting budget figures?
Uh-huh.
Okay. I think these are all pieces you're planning to do anyway, so.
Yeah, I would imagine it like Kelly, but not Kelly. The new Kelly, but only homeless services. Just remove all of me though, because I'm just kind of a problem, and then just play, yeah, okay, don't drag me into this.
Let's look for a lily then.
There we go.
So does that sound right? Are there any concerns with the request that I have just put in front of the staff? Counselor Hyatt.
I don't have any concern, but I think I just want to take a moment to acknowledge what I'm hearing on both sides. I'm hearing, yes, go forth with the RFP, yes, ask HR to draft up the job description. And the question is, can the job description be ready when the RFP responses are ready? That's part one. And part two is that RFP may be awarded because we need those services for the upcoming seasons, but it is a one-year contract, and therefore, when we have that look at the totality, that contract profile may change for the next iteration based on what we learn, based on the coordinator, and based on the broader conversation. So it will kind of be an entry point with potential shifts from what we learned with the single-year RFP that we're putting out. That's what I'm hearing.
Yeah, so it will take us a while to get someone on board.
Right, right. But it shouldn't take as much, I guess, kind of back to that question, I would not be interested in having something that slows down the RFP process.
Right.
But.
That needs to move forward regardless.
Right.
And so I think definitely we can have the job description, we can talk about the financing of that position, and here are the responses from the RFP and what we're going to move forward with. And then when we get that homeless service coordinator on, we can gift them with oversight of that contract.
Yeah, I think it's about seeing how those pieces fit together before we go down the path. I.
The primary concern is, in the past, we have stood up services and the dollars that backed those services were not available for the subsequent biennium. And it had very real tangible consequences, and we don't want to enter into a decision here where we go full bore, we start providing those services, and then we get to a point where it's like off the cliff. It's just not, that is not an appropriate place to be with this type of service. Either you provide it and you commit long-term, or you find a different route. That's what I think we're getting at here.
Right. I don't want to see us go through the process and the expense and the energy of standing something up that is not well-designed for the long run. It's exactly what it is. And I, recognizing that we are in, as you say, Sabrina, we are in with these services, the world is calling on us to provide more of them, but what is the optimal way to do that for all of the different goals that we have? And I think seeing it together will help us understand it and it'll help us communicate it, as Counselor Hanson was talking about, with the larger community, and it will be a more cohesive way forward that will then, I think, lead to an easier time in terms of budgeting it in the future because we wouldn't hopefully be making major adjustments to it right as we're coming into a budgeting cycle, hopefully.
Yep.
All right, so are there any, are you clear about what the council is looking for? Are there any final comments or suggestions? Just before we close out, I just want to acknowledge the good work of our staff, and we know what it took to get that building and that property and to stand up the services that we have there. We also know that there are a lot of community members who have come out to help us, to help us with the lawn, which was also a brand-new process, and to help us in the severe weather shelter. And all of that work is my hope, it's creating us, for us, a foundation from which to figure out what this next step looks like. But the council always wants to do the next thing very quickly, and I just wanted to pause for a moment and say thank you and make sure that, you know, the rest of your team knows how much we appreciate them so quickly moving in the direction in both of these facilities that we needed to go.
They're amazing. We have an amazing team.
We do. All right. With that, meeting is adjourned.